Jesse around?
He emailed and said he's having trouble. I just started the webinar just to see if he was an attendee.
Yeah. Oh, I see. Yes, of course.
Hello.
Hi, Jesse.
Okay, it looks like we all made it. Hi Fred, honey. Hi Karen, I think you're there somewhere.
She disappeared.
Yeah. Okay, thanks for making me co-host. I saw that in case you need to jump off. Guess I'll open the meeting. It is April 23rd, 10:30. This is a subcommittee of the Amherst Planning Board. Focused on housing and overlay districts and stuff like that. So looking at the agenda, I don't have any announcements. Anyone else have announcements at all?
Nope.
Also don't have minutes from the last meeting yet. I'll get that up for the next one. And then we had three topics really for today. Hi Karen. And I think I'm on a little time schedule. I have an hour fifteen for today. So I'm gonna sort of set a timer and keep us moving through the topics that do you think we should touch on each of them? Let me just see if anyone's in the one attendee currently, which is Pam Rooney. Hi Pam. Unless there's objection, I will bring Pam over and we can still raise hand feature to speak. And we'll see if anyone else shows up. We can always revert back to attendees. So seeing no objection, I will do that. Pam, I'm gonna bring you over.
Jesse, we could do roll call just to
Oh, yes, sorry. Yes, we'll do a roll call attendance. Please indicate you're here. Bruce Goldham.
I am here.
Brad Harwell.
Brad is here.
Karen Winter.
Here.
And I, Jesse Major, I'm here as well. So full subcommittee. Can't seem to bring Pam over. Well. Oh, she doesn't want to be. Okay, well, raise your hand Pam if you want to join it. All right, first topic is to talk more about overlay for North Amherst. And I had suggested to Nate that maybe the four of us can just help flesh out some guidelines. I guess some initial thoughts to then go back to the full board for further discussion. So, oh, Pam is now raising your hand. Bruce, you had your hand up too?
Yes, I was just, as we left it at the planning board, I think Nate, the ball was in your court. And so do I understand therefore that we're basically helping Nate to deliver the ball back to the board?
Right.
It's just fine with me, but I just, yeah.
Yeah, Nate, I don't know if you had any time or effort to put anything together yet? Or if you just wanna talk through some themes with us now?
Yeah, no, I, you know, I, I talked with some staff and I have some notes. I think some of it would be, yeah, I think, you know, I think we've talked about the density factor. And I think getting down to specifics, it's, I think, a question of, you know, what do we actually want it to be? For instance, if we call it just an overlay and we try to apply our current residential use classifications, apartments necessarily wouldn't work. We don't want mixed-use buildings everywhere. You know, off-campus or social dormitories doesn't work. So I think, I think that's, you know, the kind of the first step is what, you know, kind of what are we?
Sure. So, sorry, let me redirect this for a second. Let me see. Pam had her hand raised right before we started the conversation.
Yeah.
Uh, see. Pam, go ahead. Uh, Pam, are you there? See you.
Unmute my audio.
There you go. Now, now you're good.
I'm good?
Yes, yes. Hi.
Thank you. Hi, I didn't expect to be a panelist. I had a question for Nate that occurred to me over the weekend. Section 9.22, sort of the non-conforming use has been used in a couple situations for infill. That's, is that something that could be used in other ways or could be applied in a number of different ways? And what's the difference between that and an overlay? Is it just that you, with an overlay, you could add additional floors of height to whatever's built?
Yeah, so Pam's referencing in the bylaw, we allow a special permit if there's a non-conforming, you know, pre-existing non-conforming use. The, the, what we've experienced is that developers won't go through that because it's a discretionary special permit. And so, you know, the overlay to me would have to be by site plan review. And we could have, you know, design standards or other criteria setbacks, other things. And so, you know, 9.22 has been used, you know, Aspen Heights had done it on Route 9. One University Drive South did it. I think the, you know, the in the bylaw it says things, you know, can't be more detrimental to the neighborhood and character and scale. And so, you know, I think it would be hard to say that allowing, you know, one and two-story apartments to go to, say, four floors in double density is not impactful. I mean, I could be wrong, but I just think it would be cleaner if we had another way to do it. And, you know, in the past, say, in the last few years, 10 years, five years, developers have come and we point them to this and they don't even bother coming back just because, you know, they might have to invest a lot of money to get through a special permit process and then be denied. And so they, it's just a, it's a, it's a risk factor that they haven't been willing to take.
Thank you.
Yeah, that sounds like a good solid answer.
Yeah, so we want to give them guide rails basically and say, here's what, what we will accept more or less, so that then they'll invest the time.
Right, I mean, and they, you know, and they might not, right? I mean, we might come up with, you know, just like, say, University Drive overlay, it's an opportunity. It'll probably get used. It might not, you know, might not, right? It might not get used for three years depending on, you know, the economic climate and other things. But it provides an opportunity. So I see, you know, the North Amherst overlay as the same kind of thing. It's an opportunity if someone were to do it. You know, staff has reached out to a few property owners and managers. You know, I think it's an interesting question about what's the right density? Is it too dense? You know, I think Puffton Village is really a property. There's two actually that are really could take advantage of this. I think the rest of it is pretty complicated just with different ownerships and types. But I think it's something to look at. And I think getting back to, you know, getting back to what I had asked is really, what do we, what do we consider this? Like, is it a housing overlay? And then we have to kind of define our own type of housing we'd want there? You know, is it, you know, student housing? Do we come up with it, you know, our own kind of use classification? Because like I said, what's in the bylaw now isn't very good. So I started looking at that and just, you know.
So I've been, I've been giving this a bunch of thought also after reading the Housing Production Plan quite a bit. And the idea that crossed my mind was if we should develop really two types of guidelines, one more student housing oriented. I think that's what you're maybe suggesting Nate for this type of overlay. And then something else that might be like the Atkins Corner project. A different type of density building allowance, mixed use, et cetera. So that we have these two sort of situations already described and intentionally thought out by the planning board for what developers might consider. And then to me, the North Amherst one is, as we've been talking, is, I think, really great place for increasing student density. So that's what I would vote for. Yeah, Bruce, go ahead.
I think I agree. I, I, in my thinking about this Nate, it seems to me that the although it's a ways away, I think Cinder Jones and her development initiative at North Village or North Square would like to think that the commercial fraction of that, that project, which is all of the first floors, which is, it's, it's struggling to mature as a commercial place. There's lots of odd little I guess you might call not ideal commercial presence as I don't, that's probably sounds, but they're, they're kind of they're not the sort of thing you would expect to find when you drive into a mixed-use place, I think. So my guess is, or my thought is to what, well, the question is, to what extent should we try and take away or create another North Square in, 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 in what we're doing here? Some folks might say, well, yes, we should because, you know, there's going to be quite a lot of people there. And should they have to walk all the way to North Square, which could be three-quarters of a mile? And it's, you know, and it's, it's, it's not a nice walk really. I mean, down Old Sunderland Road and so forth. So I think there's a bit of attention there. But I, I think that whereas some mixed use in what we're talking about might be used. I, I think that the primary intent here is to create a, a student housing. So my thoughts about, so that's, that's my general sense that primarily we're trying to identify this as one of those places where we can, we can consolidate student housing. Because I, I think certainly for me, it feels that the, of the three options that we seem to pursue to satisfy our student housing problem, either spreading them out through the neighborhood using minimum distancing and so forth, and then, and defining a student household, which seems to be difficult, or expecting the university to do it. And they say, well, you know, we're already done as much as we think we need to do and we're better than most. And that leaves option three, which is apartment-type housing in, in parts of town that we think are appropriate for that. And I think we found a couple of places and this is one of them. So we should, we should, we, we should invest in that particular horse in, in this opportunity. And, and I think that we should represent that its goal is to take the load, take some of the student housing load off the rest of the town. And then, having said that, I'm interested in how we can develop more direct communication with the campus, either through some kind of pathway that was discussed in the previous iterations, which goes along. And perhaps also seeing if we can, exploring the opportunity of getting an entry in from Route 16, in from 116. Because I think if we could get a direct feed in from 116, we could we've got an answer to what will be the major question or the major problem that North Amherst residents will see, which is the traffic generation from a, a large increase in density. So I, 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 I think that those, doing what Doug said, which is, or Doug proposed, or responded to a question, or maybe more than one question from public comment, which was traffic. He says, well, if they're mostly students, they're gonna walk or they're gonna move without cars to the university. So we should facilitate that with this, some pathway or some conduit that's, that's non-vehicular. And I think we should put a lot of effort into trying to make that happen. But I think we could also do the 116 connection, which would so those, so, so in summary, I think we should identify this as a student housing opportunity primarily. And then we should do those two things to mitigate the, the concerns that greater density will precipitate in, in, in the residents of North Amherst.
Yep, I, I had a couple similar thoughts. Actually Nate, do you have a map handy with the North, North Amherst? So I had a very similar conversation with someone who lives, I forget the neighborhood, it's called, just north of campus in that little pocket. And she said, yeah, all of us will fight it, but we know it's the right thing to do. So it was very funny.
Yeah, I'll share my screen in a minute. I guess one thought would be if it's mostly students, do we have an inclusionary requirement?
Right, so.
Absolutely. Yes, I think we do. Because as someone pointed out, I can't remember who it was. Might have been, might have been, I think it was actually Janet that was such, with such an opportunity for a large amount of housing. If we don't have the inclusionary part of it, we push ourselves too close to the 10%.
Yeah.
Besides, I think we can do the inclusionary in a very interesting way by, by going there's, do what Jesse's gonna say.
That came up last time in our conversation about doing inclusionary, but I don't know about requiring it, but, or, or trying to make it in a group of inclusionary versus distributed to, to sort of make another community in that way that would be distinct from the student high-density maybe, if, if possible, so. Yeah, Fred, go ahead. One minute.
I would just mention in terms of, and I, I support inclusionary. And one of the reasons is that when the university reconstructed the, was it North Village?
It's called university housing now, but yes.
Yeah, they, they, they effectively removed an enormous number of by, by changing the layout and everything. Let me back up a little bit. I, I was not aware of this, but my wife was and we talked about it. Where a lot of particularly graduate students with very young families and the way the layout worked, you could have like five families around a common courtyard and they would take turns working on childcare and so forth. It really worked well. And, and they could afford to be there. And apparently, in the way that it's been reconstructed, all of that is gone.
Yes.
That is something that I think we need to make sure that we restore. And the, the overlay would be a way to do it.
Yeah, so I have a couple thoughts about that, but Karen, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, I support everything that you've said. Especially I, I used to hang out at North Village with those students, so I know how much they loved being in that community. I, I think we need to, when we, when we do this and we provide density, we have to at the same time have requirements. And didn't you, Nate, say, you always have, you know, you can have different requirements? And one of them is that we really do have to have a large, safe, dedicated bicycle path that goes from this to the university for sure. Then maybe we really look at much higher buildings, but make sure that there are open spaces with playgrounds around to, and then, yes, I like very much the idea of requiring or really working for access from 116. I've, we've always thought that this would be really important because even right now, I, I agree with the residents. It's terrible to be caught in that traffic there at a certain time of the day. It's already a problem. So the traffic does have to be definitely addressed.
Nate, have enough done the map? And I think all these comments work really well with the conversation that I think we had with the full board about increasing height as you go east to west. Because I could easily imagine on the North Pleasant side of the street is where we get the inclusionary housing, lower density, lower height potentially. And then there could certainly be green spaces sort of separating those units from the higher density, higher buildings, more student-oriented housing. And yeah, certainly if 116 access could work, great. But even if not, I was imagining, I don't know how this works with all the different properties, but somehow making basically a parallel access to North Pleasant sort of behind or at the west end of all these properties that could then dump into UMass down at the bottom of the southern end. There's already kind of a path there on that property, whatever it is, into UMass, I think, right? Yeah, just a bit more south from what you're showing now.
Yeah, the town had looked at using that as a, as a bike path.
Right.
You know, coming up through here. And there's some wetlands and other issues, but it's something I think that could still be examined. We have it's also, we are applying for funding to make this, you know, they had done, they widened the sidewalk to a multi-use path up here. And then at Fisher Street, and we have block rent money and we're applying for other funding to, to carry that multi-use path all the way down to almost to you know, the, the edge of campus. So there's that's in the works.
Nate, that road, so is that, those are private roads, I assume, like coming off Meadow Street?
Yeah, so all these are just considered driveways actually within here, so although.
And how does that work if like? I mean, you know, to me ideally, we would make that a bigger road and that could be a primary access into these places that, like the, the one farthest to the west, right?
Right.
Yeah, right there. And then tapping into that other one, so that, that really becomes the way in and out of this high-density place and avoids the whole circle and problematic traffic altogether. But again, I don't know how we facilitate that, how the town can sort of help make that happen.
Yeah, that's a good question. I'll take a note. I, I agree. I mean, I feel like, you know, you can almost, you know, it's like, take one of these, you know, these two entrances into Puffton and create a network of streets. And it's almost like you could carry these down and I mean, you know, a grid layout could be really efficient in terms of layout as opposed to, you know, having curvilinear roads or something. I, I think that's what's difficult about this is that then, you know, there's different properties to manage. And, you know, would a developer be willing to, to do this? You know, Puffton right here, you know, the way I, the reason I mentioned is just that, you know, they have a nice, nice, you know, property already, properties in a layout and size that could work. You know, if we zoom out a little bit, you know, you know, you can already see it's really dense compared to other parts of town. I think it could handle it. I agree with off-road transportation routes. And so that's something, you know, if we do have this overlay, it's, you know, do we do we ask the developer to provide some assistance there?
So, so couldn't it be, well, in exchange for eight stories, you gotta put in a road to tap into this other access or something? I mean, I don't know if that's the kind of
You could
That's feasible, right? For a developer, from a developer's standpoint, or if that's like getting too much?
Yeah, there's a, it's a fine line in Massachusetts with like exactions with, from projects. It can be done elsewhere in other states, but not, you know, I think there's a way to do it.
Yeah.
Brad, you got a hand up?
Uh, yeah. I don't I really don't have any idea of what the economics of this are, but there's always eminent domain.
Yep, Karen?
Nate, can you put a bicycle path through wetlands? It seems like it because a lot of the bicycle paths here do seem to be going through things like that. So then you could have parallel to 116, maybe a straight shot down and have that, if you can't build on it, be a bicycle path. Is that possible?
Yeah, sorry, I just have an older aerial image available.
Look at that.
Yeah, so when we looked before, you know, we, this is, we call it the, it's the old Cinder Path. And we had looked coming up to here and then running it all the way along here.
Yeah, yeah.
And then I think I think we're actually hoping to get all the way to here and then come up just because there's, it's actually a channel here, but you come to here and then come along to get to Meadow Street. The wetlands were one piece, I think we could manage. And then it just became the other property. You know, managing it with all the other properties and liability. And so that was, gosh, that was probably like 10 years ago, the town looked at that with UMass, you know, to, to figure out how to bring Swiftway you know, through the university and up. And so that, right now, the idea is to have this on, you know, along with Pleasant Street, it's off-road. You know, but I still think there could be an opportunity to have something over here.
Yeah, yeah. So that just got dropped because of the multiple owners problems?
Yeah, I think it was getting, right, it was getting complicated. A few owners didn't I think the, they didn't like this idea, the liability. And then the wetland piece, I think it was just, you know, I think if there was, and there wasn't, say, a lot of funding, right? I think if there's, this, I think if we were talking about this overlay and there's renewed interest of dense, in density here, I think this could, you know, pick up again. Yeah, I mean, it's already here.
Yeah.
You know, and safety was brought up, you know, like if, you know, you know, illuminating it and making it safe. But I think all those things could be worked out.
Yeah, again, I mean, to me, certainly for time of the bike path, that seems like a low a, a, an easy trade for increased density to a developer, right? We're talking about bigger roads on the northern side. I think that's a different scale, right?
Right.
Uh, Bruce, go ahead. You're muted.
My family walked through as I was, I think that this is one of the considerations related to density, isn't it? I mean, last time this conversation was had, it was had obviously in relation to the current density of, of what's there and whether that would support it and how much trouble can we how much time and effort can we spend to make a, 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 a non-vehicular conduit on that western boundary? But if we are tripling the size, tripling the densities and so forth and so much more and, and the, the, the potential revenues that we've got to, to, to do that. I mean, that's something that probably the developer could, the, the development could be leveraged to, to pu- pu- put some funding into, I would hope. As could the town and, and, and grant applications to state and federal funds and so forth to support something along there, providing that the, the wetland problem can be managed, which I hope it could. I mean, ultimately it could, you could put it on a boardwalk, but that seems like a very expensive way to solve the problem. Hopefully it wouldn't have to be quite as elaborate as that. But my point being that if we are talking about greatly increasing the density here, that is a, drives much more powerful force to create what previously wasn't there wasn't sufficient force to create. But the dynamic changes when we triple the density, I would guess. And so the density question should be sufficient to drive whatever we figure it needs to be to drive the eventual creation of that of that conduit.
All right, Karen?
So when we're talking about who is this for and we're just talking to students, we have to expand it because what's really needed is not just undergraduate housing. There's always this talk about staff and young families that work at the university and no place for them to live and faculty not coming to UMass because there's no affordable. So how can we also incorporate that into this?
I, I agree with the need, Karen. I don't think this is the right place for that. I think we make as best we can as dense undergrad housing. And the point is that alleviates the pressure from other areas in town where then we can hopefully have projects that will accommodate different kind of standards for families and professionals, whoever. Because I, and, and sort of logically in my mind, if you have these, whether they're high-rises or whatever structure they are, full of students, that's probably not where a young family wants to live. They'd rather live maybe somewhere else. But yeah, that's gonna be my bias. But I would, I view them as separate. I'd like to try and, I think it's more efficient to try these separate efforts and maybe more attractive to a developer also, because then you're not trying to balance all these things in the same project. Uh, Bruce, go ahead.
Completely agree. I was gonna say exactly the same thing. The, there, there are only so many places where we can ideally concentrate student housing and that same constraint doesn't apply to housing generally. So I think when we identify a place where we've got a real opportunity, which is approximate to campus and so forth, that's, we, we have to, we, we should be not shy in focusing on, on letting it be the primary solution to student housing. I think we, we have to, we have to be strategic. We have to focus. We can't try and solve all the problems all the time, everywhere. So I agree with you. However, there is an affordable, there is an inclusionary component here and, and it could be 60 or 100 units. Ultimately, if everything, you know, all the dominoes fell. So there is already a residual if we include the inclusionary zoning requirements, which we all agree we should. So we, we at least contribute that to the, the solution. And I think we should be satisfied to let that be the, the, the formula. And I think we should be satisfied to let that be the 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 formula, just as you said, Jesse.
Yeah. Okay, my timer says we should. Move on topic, so I'm gonna try and wrap up some of the key points. Hopefully to help you, Nate, craft something, which is. Uh sort of increasing density east to west along those properties. Maybe trying to push the inclusionary to the east and lower-density areas, but definitely including them. In a group, uh really trying to focus on the transportation issue, whether it's a bike path or. Car roads coming. Earlier on Meadow Street or from one sixteen. Um and then. You know, this number of tripling density, I think Nate, that originated from you, from the ten-year-old plan, is that right? Like, I don't know if that's the right number. I don't know what the, some of the services can. Handle like, like sewer and, you know, all that kind of stuff, that needs to be considered also, right?
Yeah, we'd have to upgrade the sewer line. Um I, Public Works had said that some of that is pretty old and small up there.
And is there a max, when they upgrade it, is there some upper limit that we need to think about? Or they're gonna upgrade it and then it can handle a whole city block in there? Like, I don't, I don't know.
You know, I think, yeah, I I think we're just, you know, I think right now they're, it's um. It is, they're not big pipes, so it's like we just went up to a bigger size as, you know, they didn't, they said that that's what you need to do. They didn't say that. The system would be at capa-, you know, like the overall town system would be at capacity, just this. One sewer main along North Pleasant, so.
With with the the triple increase in mind.
Right, yeah.
Okay, so maybe we should focus on that as the goal and. You know, whatever that works out height-wise, unit-wise.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, exactly. I think the height thing is important. I don't, you know. You know, we have, we have, you know, in the, you drive overlay, we had six stores, stories and, you know, we're talking about how high could it be here? I mean, you know, I've been to North Square now more and. You know, they're pretty tall, you know, and they're they're four stories with a roof. I I know, I I guess I was gonna look at topography and really see what. You know, what, write that, kind of how the topography works east to west and can we really get taller than five floors comfortably? I just, I don't want to. You know. Um, I guess some of it would be like, is there zones within the overlay where you have certain heights?
Yeah, I mean, I thought that, that, I mean, Bruce laid it out pretty nicely last time we talked about this, like how it slopes down east to west and that you could, sort of.
And don't, uh, North Square's got those ridiculous gables on them. Uh I mean, that's, you're right, that's, that's a story and a half of height that's not used for anything. I mean, there's so much about that beacon property that's kind of crazy, stupid and nuts. Uh from a design point of view, it's painful for me as an architect to uh have to drive past it, which I do all the time. So we can do something more like what Archipelago are doing and uh and then it won't be so. When it appears so high.
Yeah. Yeah, and I also think with this staged increase in height, it won't appear so big either, right? If you're going from two stories near. North Pleasant and then three or four stories in the middle and then six or seven towards the end, I think they won't be so in your face unless you're standing right there.
Right, because it really is about twenty feet. Uh difference in topography between North Pleasant Street and. Just that, you know, the western part of those properties, so.
Yeah, so that's two stories, right? And then if you allow another one or two, they could get seven or eight and seem like five stories, right? Karen, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just looking, you know, I was just in Europe and looking at at counting stories and. Um, they can be pretty high and and still very attractive when the, when the top floors are recessed. And have some sort of um balconies or something in the front, they can look very attractive. Uh if you have them built in that way.
Yes, that's a good idea.
Okay, any other critical points you wanna touch on this, Nate, before we move on?
No, I think that's good. I um, yeah, even I think, you know, Karen, what you said, and even limiting floor height, so you can have stories, right? And then we have, like, we have the number of floors and then the actual height and feet. And so, you know, you could say. If everyone likes to build ten-story, you know, ten-foot floor-to-ceiling or twelve-foot floor-to-ceiling, it's like, we could say, well, let's just keep it to. You know, ten feet, and that way a five-story building is fifty feet, you know, the way we'd, we could. You kind of force that a little bit. Just because I think in the older buildings, they are a little shorter, you know, the newer buildings, I get it. For mechanicals and some things, it makes sense to have some, but, you know, I don't think we really need twelve feet, you know, for each floor level, so that, you know.
Well, I could do better than that, because I have uh, it's uh. There are ways of doing it, so you don't have to have it quite so high, but I'm, I'm. But 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 I'm not sure enough of my current technology, but I, it seems to me that twelve-foot floor-to-floor on residential is excessive.
Right.
Because every foot you build is money spent for no purpose if you can't uh basically put a story in. So I would, I would think that we should imagine that the ten-foot floor-to-floor is probably a reasonable, workable number.
Brad, Brad, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, just um, keep in mind, and I I know you'll do this, Nate, but as you go down. Uh and go west. One of the consequences of. Topography uh going down is uh wetlands. And so not all of that is uh incorporeable, I would suspect. I I haven't walked it, but I suspect that not all of that is uh is buildable.
Well, uh when I did my numbers and looking on the uh USGS, I stopped my topography short. My my topo calculation short of the wetland area. So I think, I think from North Pleasant to. The beginning of the wetlands is around about twenty feet.
Okay.
One, one last thought I had about the mixed use, I don't, I would vote not to require mixed use, but certainly encourage some. In terms of services for this increased density. You know, I, i- it's unclear to me. Maybe developers already do this, but like, if you're gonna have a bigger building and it's mostly students, do you build in laundry rooms? Do you build in bike storage, all those kinds of things? And that's some of the details we could hammer out towards the end, but like. I think we should encourage that all to happen, either in buildings or as. Yeah, there's two commercial spots for a laundromat and a uh whatever, a mini-market, stuff like that, but.
Yeah, so the way we uh define mixed use, you know, so if a developer were to do that, it's not public serv- serving, then that's just for the building, that would be fine. So I think there's a way to. To do that.
Okay, yeah. Okay, um Bruce, last comment on this topic.
Um, question, Nate, uh isn't the way you, we can essentially. Uh dial the the, move the dial between mixed use and apartments, but by the percentage of uh. Commercial on the first floor, because essentially if you have a thirty percent commercial use on the first floor, the. And uh you've got something notionally seventy, but probably sixty or fifty percent of the first floor. Is essentially housing, so that means half of the building is essentially an apartment. And so my sense is that the difference between an apartment use and a mixed use is really just uh. Uh the dial of the amount of commercial required on the first floor, is is that logic or is that analysis correct or or flawed in some way?
No, I mean, that's kind of it really. I think, like I said, though, the the um non-residential space, you know, serves the public. It's not just for the residents of the building and so. Yeah, I mean, I think that's it, you know, so the thirty percent can't be, you know, some of it can't be. Reserve for the building only, really, that's for everyone, so. Um, but I do think that's a high number, I I. Yeah, and I agree, I feel like, Jesse, what you said, it's interesting, we don't require it, but we could. Encourage it, right? And we could try to find ways to incentivize it, maybe along North Pleasant Street or in a few areas.
Yeah, that's what I was imagining, but.
Yeah, I mean, what I've heard is that if. You know, the way we limit apartments with twenty-four units and some other things, you know. People would do them more, and so here. Uh maybe it's the right place to have, you know, um some other. Kind of unit mix and requirement or standards, because. You know, is it really necessary to have, you know? Someone could put a hundred units in a mixed-use building, you know, and only twenty-four in an apartment, it doesn't make any sense from a management standpoint.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So maybe, does that mean, are you suggesting we define a different type of apartment? For, which is, I mean, that's kind of getting back to where I started, right? I think it'd be good to have these kind of different definitions for this type of spot.
Yeah, we might need to. I mean, I was thinking, if it's students mostly, we could. Call it the social dormitory use classification of the bylaw and then throw in some other requirements, or we come up with a new. Kind of a part definition for this overlay, which is maybe where it needs to go.
Yeah, a large apartment unit building or something, whatever.
And then we could, yeah, specify different bedroom mixes if we wanted or not, but you know, yeah.
Yeah, great. Okay, um. Great. Good discussion, hopefully that gives you some. Direction. Uh, next up, uh ADU, Nate sent us a draft. By law, I assume that's what that was, right? You wanna talk to us about that? I had a quick look at it, had a couple of questions.
But, yeah, I I could share my screen, you know, it'll come up at the planning board, I think. You know, the goal is, you know, we mentioned, is try to get something um that the planning board would recommend or vote to council, you know, just to get that going. Um, so I uh, you know, I haven't heard from the Attorney General's office, I wrote to them the other week after our meeting with. The foreign-related. Uh piece, you know, thanks Pam. As I haven't heard back, they, you know, they acknowledged the email, but no. Uh, you know, no updates or anything. Um, and so what I, what I sent around was, you know. I think the idea would be to take our current ADU section of the bylaw and remove and replace it with a new section and we'd have a local ADU. Definition and regulations and the protected use ADU. Definition and regulations and. You know, in the local ADU, I, you know, I'm proposing or, you know, staff proposing up to twelve hundred square feet. Through administrative approval, so they do, you know, it's not by right necessarily. It is with the condition that it has to be approved by the building commissioner, and so we asked for a number of things and. Um, you know, it still has owner occupancy requirement, and the idea would be to try to make it larger to incentivize its use. Um, you know, right now, that would need a special permit and it wouldn't be allowed to get this large, but. I don't know, the thought was if, you know, if homeowners are willing to not have a protected use ADU and they would want to have a larger one, they, that we are, we're offering this. With some kind of additional conditions. Um, the protected use one is really, you know, the state. Piece, and I think the student home definition and the foreign-related, you know, I I put it in red text below as things that are. Unlikely to move forward as part of the bylaw. You know, and so the standards and conditions are the ones we've been looking at, um nothing too new. I think limiting the number of parking spaces is a nice, I I I think we can do that. Um habitable space and um. Single-family dwelling, I think are things we can interpret the by, the new state legislation and rules and regs to to mean. I think there might be some pushback from the Attorney General on that, but I'm, I'd be willing to. Kind of say, I think this is how it could be interpreted. So, yeah, I mean, you can look at, I just, I think, you know, I put it in a format that it, you know, with, you know, with changes, I think it could actually become a bylaw. Uh as opposed to just like, you know, before it was a document, um so it has a purpose, applicability, definitions and things, yeah.
Yeah, I I. I only have one. Question slash. Change I propose. I thought, take away from our last meeting. Largely raised by Pam. I thought we should include the. For unrelated in the. By right ADU. With the logic being. We've decided that's needed for our town for every other situation. And we justified it as a town, it certainly should apply to this as well. And to me, that's, the logic is so sound that, uh, yeah, maybe it'll get challenged, I don't know, but. I I would vote to include that in this draft to go to council.
I mean, I think we, I have that and um, right for local, so we could just move that up.
Uh it should be for both, right?
Yeah, for both, yeah.
Okay, I thought you intended then.
No, I I I can move it up, I um.
Clearly there for both cases, that that's what is required.
I agree with Nate, Jesse, I think it's uh, we we should put it in and have it struck down there indeed. And then, then, then at least we'll get an explanation. If we ask the question and they decide not to answer it, we don't. But if we put it in the bylaw, we're bound to get an answer to our question, so I strenuously support Jenny's Jesse's suggestion. It'll, it'll get the baby washed.
Yeah.
Yeah, I um, I I did email the, sorry, I did email the Attorney General that and I explained. How it's used elsewhere and applies uniformly across the, you know. Units and so um.
Yep, and the strategy of just dropping the student housing definition for now. This seems like the right way to go, just like try and get this on the books and then. Come back to that when needed.
Yeah, I mean, I find this, I don't wanna say it's simple, I mean, there's a lot in there, but um.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, the local ADU, you can look at it, I, like I said, we were, you know, our staff was trying to come up with a way to have. To still allow what we do allow, so we allow ADUs up to a thousand square feet, but it's sometimes it's by special permit. Could we make them a little larger and incentivize them so that there's, maybe people would opt for that rather than the protected use if. You know.
And that's to include the owner occupancy, right? Is that what you mean, like incentivize that? So that, that becomes more used than two rental houses, basically, yeah.
Right, right, so a property owner could say, well, jeez, I would like to get to a thousand square feet or do an eleven-hundred square foot ADU, and you say, sure, you can. You know, there's these additional requirements, you know, it has to be owner occupied essentially. And we have a few more um to kind of design standards or ability to regulate design.
Yeah, yeah, great. Uh Fred, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, uh Nate, the student home uh. That was included in your. Laundry list to the AG's office for comment, right?
Yes, yep.
Okay, so. I mean, I I I'm, I I obviously support it and, you know, I. Don't wanna move forward with this, you know, giving it up until. Until unless the AG office says, no, that's a non-starter, they say it's a non-starter, okay. Uh they're the uh elephant in the room.
Although, I, so part of the thought, Brad, was that. We remove it from this first. Just to get something, we can get to council that hopefully has a chance of getting voted and passed. I feel like if we include the student home right now, there's, there's no chance it's gonna go through council, like zero. And it's gonna take months and months of conversations and debates about it. And maybe by then AG will weigh in, we don't know, but if we push it to the side for the moment and at least. Try and include the foreign-related in the by right ADU. That has a chance of getting approved and guided becoming our bylaw. Even if it's just for some number of months until something else happens. Uh, go ahead.
Yeah, so Jesse, you think. Uh, the council itself won't support student home.
Correct.
I was unaware of that. I thought, I thought that the politics in town were such that it would be supported. But I could be wrong.
Yeah, I've, I've been part of three or four conversations and groups where there were so much. Hmm, basically fear of a definition at all. That, I'm sure those arguments will be made to council and, again, I I don't know for sure. But that's what my gut tells me.
So they, the the fear being that the AG's office would turn it down, right?
No, no, the fear from, I'm saying the fear from residents of us having a definition defining people by. Unrelated by. Who goes, who takes a class at community college by, i- it, it's like it's, and I get it in this current political moment of fear of. Of the, I think that's tapping into it also, just any attempt at defining and and restricting based on definitions of what you do and who you are. Right? And and I don't, I don't agree, that's how we would use it, but that's, that's what's being projected on this.
Okay, I I'll defer to you on that then.
Yeah, and again, I don't wanna drop it at all. I just think it'd be better to try and get this on the books this way. And keep pushing on the student home definition as well.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, so I I feel comfortable with what was sent around, I just brought up that foreign-related and. That could be questionable, but really, you know, there's, you know, definitions, there's, you know, fourteen. We call them requirements that apply to local ADUs and the protected use ADUs, and then there's the additional. Like three or four requirements for local ADU, like owner occupancy and kind of the. Design review standards and other um. Kind of review by staff on the local ADU, and so I I feel pretty comfortable that this. You know, we could say that the. What we have in here is, you know, according to the state regulations for the protected ADU is reasonable. So that, that, you know, it meets an object, you know, it's objective, it meets a public need, a goal, it's clear, and so if we. You know, if they have questions about the foreign-related or how we do some things, I feel like it's all, yeah.
Right, and and, sorry, Bruce, one second, part of that discussion, Fred, to me is also. With the student home definition, my sense is that staff isn't even comfortable with it. So to bring that to council, when our own planning staff and department isn't totally saying yes is okay. Just opens up the whole can of worms again, and that's why I think it's just a, maybe a better strategy, just to do it in two parts. Bruce, go ahead. You're muted again.
The dog has been behaving badly, so I uh. Um, just, uh, Nate, to be clear, I haven't, I haven't read what you sent around, but and if I had, I probably would answer this question, but it's. It seems therefore that the, the 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 by right uh protected is 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 uh, is is what we've just discussed. And then what we, I think you called the local, which is our special uh bylaw, which would allow for a larger, slightly larger. Footprint of an ADU uh that used to be a uh by um. Special permit of the zoning board, right? And are you, are you saying that that uh we would downplay that, so it's no longer. A special permit requirement, it's a staff review. Uh, and so once again, the permit, it's essentially by right. But by right, only if you comply with the additional constraints. Is that a correct understanding of the way that would, what we're proposing here?
Yeah, I mean, it is, I with the, you know, it's an administrative review, and so what that does is they're still in application, they have to fill out a survey. Plans, they record, you know, the um, basically a a a restriction at the registry that it's, you know, has to be. One of the units has to be owner occupied, and so um, you know, it's done elsewhere in different communities where this administrative review actually has. You know, some teeth, right? So, you know, essentially a building permit can't, won't be issued until certain conditions are met, and so. It's not as if they just submit a building permit and then they, they just can go forward, that's what the protected use ADU essentially is.
Yes.
This one, you know, this one, you know, we, staff can say no, the building commissioner can deny an administrative review if. He, they don't think it, you know, meets the standards in the bylaw, so.
So it's a bit like the local historic district commission where a certificate of appropriateness is uh, is is required. And the commission has ceded to the building commissioner, to Rob Mara, the ability to make some of those determinations.
Right.
Uh, on our behalf. So it's, it's, okay, I I uh, I understand kind of how.
Yeah.
But it, it, it takes the, it it means the applicant doesn't have to go before a zoning ward, which only happens once every two weeks. They can, because the staff are there all the time, theoretically, this would speed things up, but I understand that it's got teeth, as you say.
Uh, Karen, go ahead.
Yeah, I congratulate you, Nate, for doing this, because I myself was looking at, you know, doing something. In our garage for, when my, when my daughter came here with her son and we wanted to. And the, the fact that you uh were limited at that time to, I think, eight hundred square made it really. Difficult, so this gives a lot more flexibility to families that maybe want. Another part of the family to live in a smaller unit, so I I'd say great idea.
Great, okay, so hopefully this gets on the agenda for next week, maybe, planning board and. I certainly hope we can push or call for a vote and move it to council, excellent. All right, um, let's move on, before we move on to. Just general housing production plan, draft and goals, strategies, et cetera. Uh, I'd like how Doug always reads the attendees, so uh, there are two more people joined us, which are Janet Keller and Jarra Smith. And Pam is still here as well, just wanted everyone to know who's on the call. Okay, so last topic for us today was review and discussion of draft and goals and. Section and strategies for the housing production plan.
And I just wanna um, say quickly, if you, I don't have time yet to leave, Jesse, if you wanna ask for public comment, I mean. You know, I I emailed the planning board, the draft goals, and it was gonna be part of the discussion last week, it will be at the next meeting. And it's more, you know, it's a few pages, right? It's a, I don't know, fourteen, twenty page document. Um, it's the draft from the housing production plan, and so. If we don't, we don't have to spend a lot of time today, really, it's just to have, you know, the housing subcommittee and other members of the planning board. You can review it independently and provide comments back to staff and we'll get those to the consultants. Um, you know, so we can spend time today, but if there's, if the public wants to say anything, we, I could defer to them.
Okay, that sounds, sounds good, I had a slightly different topic also, uh, so sure, let's call public comment, any of the three of you. Attendees would like to share something with us? See Pam's hand up, I will give you some time, Pam, please unmute and I guess. Your address.
Hi, Pam, Pam Rooney, forty-two Cottage Street, can somebody remind public where the. Draft housing production plan is located for review? Thank you.
Thanks, yeah, I'll um, it had been on the Housing Trust uh web webpage, but I I can um. I'll email staff and just make sure that it's up there.
Uh, and well, again, the packet for us for next week for planning board, maybe?
Yeah, so the draft goals and strategies would be in. If it's not already up online for the May seventh, but it was for the April sixteenth planning board meeting, so it's in the packet there.
So can I, can I have a follow up question?
Sure, sure.
Um, so that said, if I go to your meeting uh calendar notice. And I go to more details, it's, it does not include any packet materials, so. This has happened before, and I think I I bumped into it on the planning board website as well, I didn't actually see. Packet materials.
You mean on the subcommittee? Pam, sorry.
Yeah, on the subcommittee.
Yeah, I think we're still working on that, right, Nate, getting packets for us, but planning board should be there.
Yeah, it was, it was um. I'm pretty sure it was the planning board, it may have been you folks, um, but. It was a little disconcerting because I was looking for, you know, to read ahead of a meeting and didn't find anything, I think it was actually planning board. So, um, anyway, thanks.
Good.
Yeah, the planning board, you know, unlike the council, you have to, there's a link from the planning board webpage, it says, I think. New packets or something, and you have to then click through a bunch of folders online, um, the way it's set up, it's an online directory, but they usually, they usually should be there. Um, just for the public to know.
Yeah, are, are we uh, at some point, we'll have the subcommittee also with, cause even the minutes, I think are not anywhere yet, right?
I thought they were um, on the, in the archive center mixing with the planning board minutes.
Okay. Okay.
Which isn't great, but um, yeah.
All right. Sure. Hi Janet, uh, please unmute and tell us your name and address and what you'd like to share.
Sure, um, Janet Keller, um, I live in uh, on one funny pulpit hill road. Um, and I would like to add my voice to Pam's and. Um, maybe with a little more intensity, um, it's really difficult. For those of us who are trying to follow um, these changes that are being made. Um, and uh. Any more transparency that you can add would be appreciated, thank you.
Thanks Janet, um. Yes, I I agree. Certainly, as you know, I'm sure that the meetings are recorded, they're all viewable at some point, uh, but yeah, we've been waiting for at least the subcommittee to have. Packets and stuff, it's just a staff time issue, I believe, Nate, come up on that one.
Yeah, yeah. It's a little bit of that, and it's also, I'm, I put a request into IT just to, it's a, you know, we have to add some permissions and controls and things, but. I think we can get that moving.
Oh, also, I'd say Janet, anything, you know, from the subcommittee will certainly come to planning board also, with any kind of. Resolutions or votes that happen, so a little bit way to catch up on what we're doing there. Uh, Bruce, go ahead.
Uh, just to be clear, uh, the public uh can access our. Um, by week, uh, every two week packets, is that correct? I mean. This, I mean, I get a link from. Yes, I get a link, it's easy, I click on the link and and it goes there, but uh, but. Uh, you can get there without that link, I assume, is that correct? Cause that's all I have to go on, um, I have noth- nothing more than that. Um, uh, to go on, I guess, well, I, I, oh, that's not true perhaps, because. Sometimes uh, running up to meetings, um, Pam or you Nate or others on staff will send emails. To the board with the late arriving uh material, and I suppose that's not. I don't know how quickly or if that gets added to the packet and how. Accessible that is to the public, my guess is that somehow or other it is, but uh. Uh, how does that happen? I mean, when you get late arriving material that goes directly to the board, how is that made public?
Yes, so you know, just, here's the planning board webpage, over on the right and column, there's packets, if you hit current, this is where I mean, it takes a few clicks. It brings you to this online directory.
Yes.
So you'd have to go to, you know, the year and then the meeting date.
Yeah, it's, it's all pretty straightforward, really.
Yeah, it's all there, so, you know, Pam uh manages it, um, you know, Sattler in our office, and so. Typically, we'll try to get stuff uploaded, you know, as late as like four o'clock on a meeting date. Uh, you know, unfortunately, like, right, if something comes in, and so when we email it to the planning board, then we upload it to the packet as well online, so, you know, anything.
Yeah, but just below you there, two down is the housing production plan, and there it is right there.
Yeah, so if you click on it, it should, yeah, yeah.
And then I download it, and Bob's your uncle, you've got it there, and you can, uh, I download these sometimes. Because I wanna mark them up in some way, which I can't do with the online uh.
Right.
Uh, but downloading it is fine.
Yeah. Okay, um, hi Jarra, apologies for not pronouncing your name correctly, please tell us your name and address and unmute and share your thoughts.
Great, thank you, uh, my name is Jarra Smith, fifteen Alyssum Drive, uh, and you nailed it, Jesse, Jarra like Sarah with a J. Um, I uh, I'm just looking at the HPP draft uh for the first time, so. Just one quick thought is I noticed that there's um a suggestion to investigate a loan product for. To support ADUs, which I think is fantastic, but I would also um. Encourage the inclusion of some kind of financial product for. Missing middle housing, because one of the things that I've encountered uh in my work is that one of the. Biggest challenges to developing those two, three, four, you know, or other, a little bit higher density. Uh, missing middle housing opportunities is banks don't really know how to loan for those kinds of. Housing products, they're not familiar with it, they can be seen as risky, and so to the degree that. The town or, you know, could cooperate with one of our local banks or CDFIs or something to develop some kind of. Missing middle loan product, uh, I think that would be a pretty crucial linchpin for supporting that kind of. Development moving forward, thank you.
Hey, thank you, Jar.
Yeah, uh, can, can I ask Jesse, uh, just his background, because it sounds, typically, we have citizens. Commenting, but sometimes we have people who may be citizens, but sometimes they're. People who are professionally engaged in some aspect of what we're talking about, is that your background, Jesse, uh, Jarra?
Yeah, yes, I'm a, I'm both a, a very happy resident of Amherst, Massachusetts, but also, I um, I work. I'm a professional housing policy consultant, and I work with uh towns and counties and other organizations across the country on. How to support um, housing production, primarily focused on housing affordability, but. Uh, yeah, this is, this is in many ways my, my profession and my passion.
If you haven't already done so, would you write a one or two short paragraph email to uh. Because your, your language is good, and uh, and I think it'll strike home better if it's your words that. Go directly to the uh, to the, to both, both the planning staff and and the town administration as well as to Barrett, the consultant. Would you be, if you would do that, that would be helpful.
Yeah, and I'll take, I'll take a closer look at the, the document altogether as well.
Sounds like we would benefit from you doing that, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Jar, please, please come back. Okay, um, that actually, Jar's comment is a great segue into the other. Comment I was gonna bring to the group, and I don't wanna get into the details, cause the Atkins. Uh, the archipelago project is on planning board agenda for next week, um, but I did wanna share a thought with. The three of you on the subcommittee, because I've been thinking about this a lot the last month or two, that. My time on planning board, I feel like we don't do a lot of long term planning. And I think we're mostly reacting to what developers are bringing us, and I think that's a mistake. Um, and I would just encourage us to be a little more proactive in the planning part when a project arises. And so, uh, again, I'll comment on this on Wednesday in specific relation to my thoughts on that new project. Uh, but I think we're getting there, I think, you know, talking about these overlays and really trying to, to think big picture about what the goal is, rather than. Letting developers tell us what they wanna do, um, so yeah, I'm gonna try and be a little more proactive on that front, I love some company in doing that.
Jesse, do we have time for any comment on the uh, the housing production plan?
Sure, I, I mean, I've got seven more minutes, then I've gotta go, uh, but there's still quorum if I leave, so you guys could talk a little more if you wanted to.
Okay. Um. I, I made a whole lot of notes, the trouble is that I, I looked at this some days ago and uh. Um, well, that's, that's just um, in the second uh, um. The second uh, piece on uh. There are four sections, four strategies, four clusters of strategies, and the second, the first item on the second was. The suggestion that the inclusionary zoning be increased to fifteen percent. Um, and that, uh, and there's a few other recommendations there as well. Um, then there was a a suggestion of dispersing affordable, questioning the wisdom of dispersing affordable units. Throughout, I know this was kind of a, a policy that probably dates back decades, and the idea was, we don't wanna ghettoize. Which would probably be a word that is loaded, uh, and so the idea was, well, let's not ghettoize things, we're spread out. But I think the recommendation here that, that dispersing isn't always a great idea. Is one that we really should give some thought to, um, for the reasons that Fred suggested, as far as the old university housing is concerned and. And so forth, so I like that idea, I'm not sure about whether we think we can appropriately drive twelve percent up to fifteen percent. Um, uh, I'd like to give, so for us to have some discussion about. Why we think that's a good idea, or whether we do, and or whether the alternatives are, and why, why indeed that's suggested. Uh, that's a, so I, that, 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 that jumped out at me. And I also, this idea in the same session of granting credits, I didn't really understand or credit units. It seems to be a bit of a transfer of development rights type of thing, but I didn't really understand it, so that. Portion of the strategic, that cluster, that, that item in the cluster of strategies needed. I I I needed some conversation about that, cause I. Uh, I didn't fully understand, or I hadn't fully developed thinking about some of that, so that's a, that's a point of entry for me anyway. There's a few other points of entry, but that's, we don't have a lot of time, so I just chose one.
Yeah, Nate, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, I was gonna say, the trust is, will be look, talking about the inclusionary piece too. Um, you know, and uh, there had been an amendment last year that never quite made, made it forward to adjust the payment in lieu of. Um, language. To allow it to be more than four times the median income, so. Um, I think the fifteen percent, you know, could be possible, and maybe there's a tiered approach, right, so that. That applies to projects of over so many units or something, um. Yeah, and I, I, you know, I think there's. Um, ways to write it, you know, something else that staff has noticed is that, you know, the eighty percent AMI. Um, you know, you wanna get units at different income levels, but the. It's hard to fill at eighty percent AMI, there's a narrow margin, you know, of, of households that qualify that then can afford the units. And so, or reaching out to some developers and property managers to kind of better understand why. Some affordable units with, through, that are provided through inclusionary zoning are left vacant. You know, is it, are there some other barriers that we don't know, um. Unique to Amherst, you know, for instance, sometimes they require, you know, three and a half times the rent upfront, or you have to earn three to four times the monthly. Rent and income, which you're not supposed to do, but maybe they don't know they're not supposed to, um, you know, you can't. Deny someone an affordable unit based on ability to pay if they are already income eligible. Um, so, you know, we're trying to figure that out, but I, yeah, I think that's a good discussion, I think we could. Have some different ideas for the inclusionary zoning, um. And the credits, yeah, maybe they're complicated, I'm not. You know, Bruce is right, it's like this idea of like, you know, having a swap for something, you know, affordable units, and then you could do this, and I don't. I don't, you know.
It seems, it seems as though it was somewhere between. Actually requiring them in the development on the one hand and payment in lieu on the other. And this was saying. Well, we, we won't make you put them here and we, we, we won't ask for payment in lieu, we'll just have you put them in some other development. And, and if I understood that, that, that seemed to be, I seem to remember the conversation. We had something very similar with Barry Roberts. Uh, and, and Barry's answer, I think it's one of the few times when Barry spoke because he's, he's a. He, he's, he's a, he's a listener, um, but he said. It's quite complicated because all of these developments are often. You know, it may, it might be Barry Roberts' building, uh, that this is a Roberts development and so is that, and so is that, but all three of them are. Barry with different partners. And so it, uh, I got to understand from that conversation, just that two minutes or so. That this credit, uh, uh, you know, swapping or whatever. It just seems as though it would be almost unworkable if you are really trying to move something. How can you do that? It just seemed to be, but so the, 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 that was my question on that is, is. Do I understand correctly? Um, or is, or is perhaps the consultant not understanding the complexities of what they're suggesting?
Hello, Fred, want to comment?
Yeah, I, I remember that conversation as well, and I remember we immediately backed off of, uh. Pursuing that at, uh, fifty-five South Pleasant Street.
It's my recollection, Fred. So my question then is, is, is what the, is what Barrett's, uh, is what the document is addressing, is the strategy. Is that identical to what we were considering or asking of Barry Roberts, or is it somehow different?
Yeah, and I can, you know, and I'll, I'll, uh, I've taken some notes that I can forward on to the consultants from this meeting. I think one would be that. Um, can they explain it a little bit better or how they envision it working in Amherst?
Yes, and, and with reference to Barry's clearly and simply articulated, uh. Um, statement of the problem associated with doing that. In other words, how can you solve that problem? Or this is not the same situation, so it avoids. It, it's, 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 it's not the. It's, it's not the same thing. That would be nice to know.
Okay, I've got to run. Uh, Bruce, I think you're officially vice chair, so I'm handing over to you.
Well.
Close the meeting, Bruce.
I would, uh, yeah, you go and. Okay, bye Jesse. Um, uh, do we have any further need to keep going? Without the.
No, I, I was, I was gonna say one thing, yeah, Bruce, it's interesting when. The town, um, hired a consultant a number of years ago to look at inclusionary zoning. Um, you know, one of the responses or comments was like, you know, you want to get the units built. So, you know, if there's. Options for developers not to build them, then sometimes you, they may not get built, right? And so the payment in lieu was. An, an option that was allowed. But the idea is that the payment was supposed to almost disincentivize its use or provide enough funding that it could, you know, leverage and actually get a unit built. Um, you know, not to, you know.
My, my general sense of the, of twelve, uh, which is a little bit more than ten, and the logic of ten is that let's make. Um, larger scale housing that gets built, let's. Let's not let it adversely affect the affordability balance in town and ten percent is, it's a number generated by the state. And so the logic of an inclusionary zoning that keeps us above ten percent. Um, my, uh, I don't, I wasn't part of the discussion, but my guess was. That that strategically, generally speaking, was a, was a strong argument for inclusionary zoning. It just, it, it, it keeps us. Ahead of the curve and twelve percent does that. And so this is a different conversation, it seems to me about whether we can be. Not exactly greedy, I mean, we are in a way, but it's, it's fulfilling a valuable and, 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 and kind of imperative needs, so it's. It'd be nice if we could do more, but, but the logic for doing twelve is different from the logic of doing fifteen. It seemed to me. It's a different argument.
Right.
Shall we, uh, um. I mean, I, I, one thing Jesse and I have been, Jesse's been talking, and I'll leave Jesse to raise this, it's his idea, and so I won't. Burn his bridge. Um, the only thing that I would have left to talk about would be more conversation on this, uh. Uh, uh, document, but, um, I've, I've got my notes from having read it about. Uh, well, basically I read it in preparation for our Wednesday meeting. Last week, and so now we're a week away and I've, I've forgotten a little bit of, even though I've got three pages of notes. I'd rather look at it again before I kept talking about it. This, this, do either of Karen or Fred, do you want, do you have topics that you would like us to? Uh, maintain, keep going on? Karen says no, Fred, I think says.
I can, I can continue, but.
My sense is that Jesse's an active chair on this meeting and I would. Uh, I, I would like to have him included in continuing conversations. I think that's good. We've had an hour and a quarter of conversation.
Okay, yeah.
Oh, actually an hour and twenty. So we, we've done a fair bit and we've got a meeting. Oh, hold on. We.
Not till the, yeah, not till the seventh.
Yes, that's right. So we've, we don't have a meeting. Uh, for a while. Um, okay, I'm gonna declare that we are adjourned.
Yeah, thanks everyone.
Thanks very much.